So we've got four. Now, you said...
Fred, I talked to him on the phone and he said he'd see me at 5:00. But I don't know, should we get started or just wait another minute?
Well, I guess we should at least pull it over. And you know what? We'll skip over the Michael's presentation and get rid of the rest of the stuff while we're waiting, maybe? Because we have a quorum, we can do that. So for Stephanie, would you just call out your name so that she knows who's here? Chris Collins is here.
Juanita Martinez is here.
Peter Almenas is here.
Clarence is here.
There we go.
All right.
Okay, so certificate of compliance, are you ready for that one, Kevin?
These two items are pretty simple. 236 Russell Street, if you remember that subdivision. Only a couple of the parcels were actually in buffer. This one is outside of buffer, but they're trying to sell the house, so the order is still attached to it. So they're just looking for a partial certificate of compliance for 236. So it's administratively covered, but outside of jurisdiction.
So does someone want to make a motion to issue a partial certificate of compliance for 236 Russell?
I'll make a motion for a partial certificate of compliance for 236 Russell Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Was that Clarence?
That was Clarence.
Yes, it is.
So can we...
Roll. Chris?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Juanita?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, the next item, 55 Beverly Street. This is a really old one. They actually... Oh, here we go. We got Fred.
There's Fred.
A certificate of compliance was issued for this... A complete certificate was issued for 55 Beverly, but they must have never recorded it. So they're asking for reissuance of it with fresh signatures so they can record the certificate. So my suggestion is to issue a complete certificate of compliance for 55 Beverly.
Anybody have any questions? It's what happens when they don't file right away, these items get lost. Somebody want to make a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for 55 Beverly Street?
I'll make a motion to issue a certificate of compliance for 55 Beverly Street.
I'll second that. Okay, roll. Chris?
Yes, Fred, you're gonna need to unmute yourself.
Clarence?
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 Yeah.
Juanita?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now we'll go back to the agenda because we're trying to take care of a couple of quick things. Fred, wait, I'm giving you a chance to get in. So we have a petition for ID 5901 for a request for determination of applicability for 1626 Bay Street. Mike, do you want to... Presentation?
This is not mine.
Oh, this is not yours?
Berkshire Avenue is mine.
The location is...
Oh, the location is 797 Berkshire Avenue. The applicant is 626 Bay Street, Inc., but the location is Berkshire Avenue.
Right, Berkshire Avenue. And what we have there is an existing building, has commercial use in it, and it's currently served by septic system. And they want to connect to the sewer on Babin Street. And existing plumbing for the building, which is basically just bathroom facilities for the workers, goes out the rear of the building through septic. And that sewer would be connected with a six-inch sewer pipe, typically five, six-foot trench depth to a new sewer manhole on the property, another sewer manhole on the property, and make a turn to go into Babin Street, where there's an existing sewer manhole at the end of Babin Street. And the plan shows the pond out there, and forgive me, I forgot the name of the pond.
Moon Lake, I believe.
And there's a very narrow bordering vegetated wetland associated with a flat area right at the edge of the pond. The land slopes gently down to the pond, and the soils there are all urban sands and gravels. It's a pretty dry site with the exception of low area at the edge of the pond, which has been flagged as boring vegetated wetland. So the connection would be a temporary disturbance for the term of construction, which would probably be... Entire construction would be a week. Work within 100-foot buffer zone will probably be completed in a two-day period. And it's planned to restore the site by backfilling the trench and immediately seeding the area to allow for revegetation. There is a silt fence plan to protect the construction area and separate it from the boring vegetated wetlands. Very, my estimation, very low-impact construction, temporary construction. And I wouldn't view it as presenting any threat during construction or after construction to either the wetlands or the pond. So therefore, we've submitted a request for determination.
Mike, could you just touch on why it's not feasible to just connect straight to Berkshire Avenue? And that's why you have to kind of go to the adjacent road?
Yeah, there's currently no sewer on Berkshire Avenue for the entire frontage of this building. And it probably will not be because there's a railroad trestle out there that essentially blocks sewer construction past the railroad trestle. It was looked at by the owner... Going to Berkshire Avenue was looked at by the owner with the Springfield Sewer and Water Department. And their preferred route was down to Babin Street because it involves very little construction. And it's simple, going across Berkshire Avenue, the nearest sewer on Berkshire Avenue is at Cottage Street, the end of Cottage Street. So any connection to Berkshire Avenue require a private sewer connection crossing Berkshire Avenue at a 45-degree angle over to Cottage Street. And that involves crossing multiple utilities. You've got water, gas, electric out there. And so it's a very complicated, expensive connection if it were to go that way. There's also traffic issues during construction. And Berkshire Avenue and Cottage Street are currently scheduled for reconstruction of the roadway intersection, which is going to happen next, early next construction season, I understand. So the engineering planning is all complete on that at this time. So the contact at Sewer and Water was Lisa Berman, and she sent an engineer out to review the connection with the property owner. And Sewer and Water recommended the current routing down to Babin Street because of its simplicity and the not getting involved with crossing Berkshire Avenue with all the utilities out there.
Okay.
So that's the primary reason is this is the preferred route by Sewer and Water.
Just out of curiosity, Mike, does Babin go out to Berkshire, but then head towards the Orchard? It doesn't go towards Cottage? Is that what it does? Or does it go the other way?
No, it's... If you went, if you were going out Babin Street to Berkshire Avenue, you'd have to take a left and go a short distance, and then take a right onto Cottage.
Oh, okay.
So the sewer line... I'm not sure of the routing, but it would make sense that the sewer line, if you're coming out of Babin Street, probably takes a turn to the right and heads in the northward direction.
Now, Mike, it looks like you're crossing the 50-foot buffer zone.
Yes, and I tried not... I looked to see if there was an alternative, and there really isn't. No matter how you slice it and dice it there, we end up 30 feet from the sewer manhole to the edge of the BVW. But again, you know, the soils are friendly, the topography is friendly, and the construction is very simple. It's a four-foot cut right there to get down the sewer grade. So there isn't a lot of excavation and backfill required. It's a clean and simple installation.
So, Mike, the ordinance says that in order to go within the 50-foot buffer, you have to do an improvement. Are you offering something as an improvement?
Yes, we can offer an improvement. And the area of that lot between the proposed construction and silt fence and the BVW is very sparsely vegetated. There's a few trees out there. And being very dry, sandy soils, it's basically a weedy lot. I mean, even the weeds don't like it there, it's so dry. So what I would propose in that area between the silt fence and the BVW is that I put in some native shrubs and small trees to enhance that open area. It'd enhance it visually, and there'd be some enhancement possibly for wildlife associated with the pond.
Well, that sounds like would be, yeah, a better habitat post-construction than pre-construction.
Yeah, we could make it look like a park when we're all done, you know? Once those shrubs and small trees fill in, it could look very attractive because you have the water ridge there and you have some small trees that don't extend much further than the wetland line. So by bringing trees and shrubs up into that buffer zone, it would give a park-like feel, and I think enhance it for wildlife.
So you'd be okay if we did a negative with the provision that you implement whatever plan you submit to Kevin, your planting plan?
Yes, yeah, and I'll do a nice job. Nice mix of shrubs and small trees. And I can't use... It would be inappropriate to use a wetland grass mix there because the soils are so dry. You know, I'd have to use a dryland grass mix, like Little Blue Stem or Big Blue Stem, some native grass that can take the droughty conditions.
And Mike, as I talked with you earlier, you know, for public input, if there is any, we have to automatically continue. So if you could just kind of work on getting us a planting list before our next meeting, that'd be appreciated.
Sure, I'll get you a planting plan and a planting list for that area.
Thank you.
I have one question about those plants. Since the area is so dry, once they're planted, is there any maintenance that can be... So that they could be watered while they're in their young stage? Because to put...
I'll look at that. I'll look at that, but it's not practical. Best thing to do is plant it early in the season, very early in the spring or late in the fall, and pray for rain. In a drought year like we just had, unfortunately, a lot of the plantings did take a beating if they weren't watered. You can see how this area really isn't close by to anybody's garden hose for watering. Maybe on the tree species, we could use some of those watering bags. You've seen, I forget what they're called, but there's a...
I've seen them.
Bag that surrounds the tree and do it that way. Normally, on a dry site like this, I recommend a two-foot ring of wood chips to hold the moisture, and a weed barrier beneath to prevent weed competition. And that usually gives trees and shrubs a little edge. You know, it takes three to five years for the wood chips to totally dissolve. So you get that little advantage during establishment if we use some mulch around the trees.
So it's probably best to plant those trees and shrubs now in the fall?
Yeah, it is.
If you have time?
Well, we have time right up until the ground freezes, so I don't see that as an issue. My selection will be for trees and shrubs that withstand drought. You know, obviously, we're not going to use any wetland vegetation because that wouldn't be advantageous here. You want something that's drought-tolerant.
Tactile.
We may be seeing that pretty soon.
Yeah.
Okay, does someone... No, we can't make anything anyway. Someone want to make a motion to continue till the next meeting and to allow for public input? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to continue Berkshire Avenue.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Who seconded?
That was Fred.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Roll call?
Roll call would be Chris?
Yes.
Juanita?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, see you next meeting.
Yep.
Bye now.
And just a reminder from anyone in the public that is watching this, if they want to submit comment, you can do so via email. That's kchafee@springfieldcityhall.com or by phone, 413-787-6234.
Thank you, Kevin. So under three, we have water and sewer crossing?
Yeah, so we don't have that tonight, but I wanted to discuss the possibility of meeting out of order, out of our typical order. They are getting in a time crunch. They've been waiting on natural heritage. And I was informed today that they expect to have that approval on Friday of this week. So in the interest of trying to move the project along with appeal periods and stuff like that, I'm proposing that we hold a meeting next Tuesday, the 20th, at 5:00.
How does everyone's calendar look for next Tuesday?
It sounds... Okay.
It works for me.
Okay.
Okay. So...
It's the 20th, right? The 20th?
It's the 20th.
Correct.
Yeah?
Fine for me, too.
I will let them know that that's what we're shooting for.
Excellent. Okay, and tree work on Methuen Street, Kevin?
Yes, so I have two additional tree jobs that are expensive over the amount that you approved that I could work with Alex on. So Methuen Street, this was... The city took a beating with some of these storms we had. This is a massive oak tree came down from our property onto their backyard and actually very nearly onto the house. It's just a really tough spot. So they're going to need a crane to do it, so it's $2,400. So I was seeing if we could clean up our tree that came down.
They can't get in there by around there? They don't want to cart it out? They want to haul it up?
It's... Access is impossible.
Possible access?
Yeah. And the log itself is really big. So they told me they need a crane from the driveway over the house and pick it out and put it on the street.
Wow.
Yeah.
Let's hope they tighten the new truck. Do you need... All right, so I guess we need a vote because it's above the approved amount of Methuen Street to approve it. Someone like to make a motion to approve the removal of the tree from Methuen Street?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion we remove the tree on Methuen Street for $2,400.
To be exact, $2,460.
$2,500.
And I think I heard Clarence second. Did you second Clarence?
No, but I will. I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, roll. Chris?
Yes.
Juanita?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
All righty.
So you have another one on DeBois Street?
Yeah, this is a tricky one. It's a big oak that we've actually trimmed before because it grew from our property. The tree's in okay shape, but it grew at an angle and the canopy is just essentially over the house. And the homeowner actually got their insurance denied because of the tree.
Wow.
And he shared with me the document from the insurance agency. So if we took out all of the branches that were overhanging the house, the canopy would essentially, we would essentially kill the tree. So the suggestion is just to remove the tree, and it's $1,800 because they need a crane as well.
I've never heard of them, homeowners, being denied for trees on their property before.
Yeah.
Oh, I have.
Have you?
Yeah.
Yeah, your neighborhood's got some big oaks, so...
Yeah, no, not here. It was someplace else. But they were denied because of the tree.
My contact at Northern said he's experienced this before, but it's typically because of, you know, branches. So you go, you limit up, and then they're good. But just it grew at such an angle out from the woods, it's just sort of, it's not feasible to just cut the branches, so...
And you said it was $1,800? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Who's doing the work?
This is all Northern. They have the preferred contract with the city.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to approve the removal of the tree from DeBois Street at a cost of $1,800?
I'll make a motion to remove the tree on DeBois Street.
Okay, who is that?
That was Fred.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Roll. Chris?
Yes.
Juanita?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kevin, quick question. When they cut it down, do they put that in the street, too, or do they actually remove it?
They're going to have to remove some of it, but I'm having them leave the log just to... It actually gives us a little savings. But they'll remove the canopy and chip that in the street.
Oh, okay. Okay, item five is 572 Dwight Road. A deed amendment?
Yeah, so Chris is aware of this one. I'll fill everybody else in. Many years ago, when this house was built, I think there was some, I think, a violation of encroachment. And so to sort of sort out all the issues, a deed restriction was placed on the house that no future work, like, you know, clearing, excavation, putting structures, was allowed beyond what already occurred. So it's a recorded instrument on the deed. There's a vacant parcel next to it that is also attached to this property. And the restriction passed to that vacant parcel as well. There's a significant amount of that parcel that is out of the 100-foot buffer zone. And they're now selling the property and want to build a house on it. So we came to the idea that we keep the restriction on the property, but that we amend it so that the language states that it doesn't apply to anywhere outside of the 100-foot buffer. So as long as they keep that 100-foot buffer wooded and undisturbed, they can build a house in the outside of the buffer.
Yeah, and I think there's plenty of room on that lot for them to do that.
Yeah. I walked it with the developer, and I estimated when I was out there, I was like, "I think this is probably around 100 feet." So I told him, "Take a tape measure and see it for yourself." And he called me and said he still has plenty of room to put the house. He's just going to put a line of silt fence at 100 feet, and they'll probably clear up to that line. So with the attorney that represents the developer, I put together some language, and she amended it and put it on sort of like a... Something that can be stamped by a notary. And Chris would ultimately sign the document as the chair. And then they would record that at the registry, just kind of releasing the restriction for anything outside of 100 foot.
This is much further away from the wetland than the original violation because they built close to the stream.
There was the stream, which is probably a couple hundred feet away, but there was like a finger of wetland behind the property that kind of snakes its way up to the very, very back of this parcel that we're talking about. So the buffer does go on to it, but the majority of it, I would say, is outside of buffer.
And does this give them enough room for like a backyard? Because that was always, it's always an issue with us.
Yeah, I think it does because it's a long, skinny lot. It's actually like a triangle, so it might be a weird-shaped backyard. But I think it does still give them room. And I don't know, Chris, do you want... I have that document up. Do you want me to share screen so people can see it real quick?
Yeah, that'd be nice.
All right.
Because the original violation was exactly that, Juanita? Because the, the original violation was exactly that, Anita. The house faced Dwight Road and they filled towards the stream to get a yard. That was the original violation.
I think I remember that actually.
It's a while ago, but yeah.
I mean, just because it's Dwight Street, I think I, but anyway, could be anything.
So I don't know if you want to take a quick look, see if anything jumps out at you.
Oh, it's not a, a diagram of the area?
It's just the wording that would be added.
Just the instrument.
Okay.
Looks good to me, Kevin.
Okay. And then I'll have to find someone to, uh, to stamp it, um, as a notary, so, but.
Isn't one in your building?
There is. Uh, I don't know if you know her though. Um, isn't it supposed to be, you have knowledge of, I guess I could show her this recording. But I'll have to track you down, Chris, and get your signature.
Or if you're out and about my way, I could always notarize it.
Yeah.
Chris just can authorize me right over the Zoom meeting.
Yeah, okay.
You can? You can authorize over the Zoom meeting?
I'll tell her that I'm signing the document.
Yeah.
So she's, she's aware that it is my, she has seen notarized things before me that I am signing it and Kevin will bring it to get notarized.
Oh, good.
And actually, I'm going to be in City Hall on Thursday.
I'll be there.
Be gone. Were you, what time do you, do you leave City Hall? Because I'm not sure what
Four thirty.
That's about the time I would get there. So I could make, if you want to do it on Thursday, Kevin, I can come in like a quarter after four, make sure that we're, that we're all there. We can just have Stephanie notarize it right then.
Yep, and then I have your signature right in front of me.
All right. Well, we make it a quarter after four on Thursday then.
Okay, motion?
Uh, do we need one? I'm just going to sign it?
Well, I, I think we need a motion just to, um,
To amend the deed.
To approve, uh, Chris, to sign that document that I just shared.
Somebody want to make the motion to approve the deed amendment and give me authority to sign it?
I'll make a motion to approve the deed amendment on five seven-two Dwight Road.
I'll second.
Stephanie?
One second, one second. I'm still writing.
Okay.
Okay, roll, Chris?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Fred?
And the, the last item on the agenda is Hill Chris Park Cemetery. Uh, I think you're all aware. We've had them in a couple of times and they, they've done work and they've been told to stop. Um, and have you, are you all familiar with the cemetery, the pond that's in the middle of it? Um, if not, there's a big wetland that, that's to the side of it going probably the north side, the north. Actually, yeah, northeast side of it, I would guess. Um, and they had originally gone in there and cut the whole thing. We told them, leave it alone. Let it re-vegetate. Well, they're continuing to mow it, um, no matter how many times we tell them. Um, it's just like when he built the, a drain and, and dumped it in the pond without us. Oh yeah, I thought I could do it. You know, it, it's, it's been going, ongoing with the guy who runs it. So my suggestion to Kevin was that we issued the board of directors a fine, um, for a violation. And that will get their attention and perhaps we can get this issue resolved where they stop doing work without getting permission.
Oh, that sounds like, I mean, because he's been, he's been before us many times. And he's like one of those, yeah, he, he just talks his way out of it. Yeah.
And they mowed it as soon as what they, I called you there last week.
Yeah.
And they were, they had just mowed it again. It's just like, come on, guys. Because he'll never return. The wetland plants will never get a chance to reestablish themselves if they keep mowing it. So, um, someone want to make, make, I mean, we should, I don't know, a couple of hundred dollars maybe? I think that's what it said. I forget what it says in the ordinance. Um, which we could, we could waive if they actually come in and, and give us, you know, a restoration plan or apply it to the cost of it.
Because I, I was contacted, um, maybe, um, maybe like a month and a half, two months ago, and then a little bit more recent, um, from a, a wetland consultant saying that he had been retained by the cemetery to kind of establish, you know, get a order of conditions on things they can and can't do. So we don't keep having this, this battle. But I've seen, I haven't seen anything. So, um, so that, that could potentially be an outcome.
But actually in the past, we've dealt with him, but by dealing with the board of directors, I think that's a good idea, Chris. By dealing with the board of directors, then somebody else knows about it and now he is responsible.
Yeah, that was my thought, that we've been dealing with him a lot and it, I, I'm sure it doesn't go any further than just him.
Right, and they want him to clean up, to, to, to mow it. They want him to, yeah, so I think that's a good idea.
So the bylaw does, uh, basically creates a, um, shall be punished by a fine if not more than three hundred dollars. And it does establish a, you know, you can do it ongoing if you so choose. This is sort of like a one-time
Right, yeah. If it's depending upon the severity, you could make it up to a daily fine, but I don't, we just want to get the attention of the board of directors, I think.
Right. And so should we add that if, if they do what we recommend, they could add that three hu- three hundred dollars or whatever we decide to, to their repairs and, or should we just?
I think we can tell them that when we meet with them. I think we get the, we get somebody in. And I don't think we just want the maintenance guy at the, who comes to the meeting. We need someone representing the board as well.
Yeah.
So we create a, a list of the do's and don'ts and have that with us. That way, when we talk to them about it, if they can't say, oh, well, we didn't know or you never gave us anything, we'll have the list for them right there. So they can just go by that and they, they can't use the, the, uh, thought process of, I didn't know.
Yeah, well, basically they were told not to do anything within a hundred feet of the edge of pond. Uh, and I think that would, well, actually no, because the wetland goes quite a bit further.
But I, I get your meaning, Fred. I, I think it doesn't hurt to just, to put it all in writing and send it with the, um, you know, I can send it, uh, what's it called? Through the mail where they have to sign for it and so it's sort of like, yeah, so they, they can't, I, I, I do like that idea, just.
Yeah.
But, but that should also, in that, um, letter, it should also be stated that they've been told many times.
Yeah, and that's, there's, some of that is a matter of public record as well.
Right, right.
You know, a lot of these, I'll, I'll say, I call them up and go, you know, what's going on? I got another call that there's work going on and that often is the, the response, oh, you told me that I could do this. And it's like, well, obviously we, we never, we never did. So, but with the violation, that's all. We had public meetings that we issued an enforcement. I mean, that was a few years ago, but, um, so.
So I think it, to Fred's point, I think that we probably should word it that no work may take place within the area that, that they determine as the sunken garden area, because that's what they call it. It's on a stone there. Saying the sunken garden.
Yeah.
Um, until this issue is resolved. So does someone want to make a motion to issue the fine to the board of directors and whatever amount you think is appropriate?
Well, should we make that amount now before we?
Yes.
Go with the three hundred.
Out.
Well, usually what we'll do, Fred, is what, if they actually come in with the real plan where they, they do some stuff, we'll waive that to help pay for the cost of actually doing the work. Wait, I don't think, I don't know if we've ever collected a fine unless somebody just completely, you know, didn't do anything.
The Norca Street.
Every time we've had it, we've, we've just, okay, you can apply this to the work. Just, let's get the work done.
Yeah, makes sense.
So someone want to make a motion then?
I'll make the motion to, uh, send, uh, paperwork for a three hundred dollar fine to the board of directors, that no work to be done without notifying us first.
The area of the quote sunken garden.
In, in the area of the quote sucking garden.
I don't want to tell them we can't mow the rest of the
But you know what? The three hundred dollars will get their attention more than a hundred dollars.
Got mine.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
A roll call, Stephanie?
Chris?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Okay, having gone through the agenda, um, or did we? Did we have minutes to vote on?
I set out minutes. Oh, yeah, there were minutes, but they're not on the agenda.
Right. All right, so we'll just add them to the, we'll have two sets for the next agenda because I did see minutes.
Sorry about that.
So we'll vote two, we'll vote two of them at, on the next.
Okay.
Okay.
Having gone through our, uh, order of business and the only thing that's, uh, in order is a motion to adjourn.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, roll, Chris?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.